Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Let the record reflect, all board members are present except Tom Prins is absent this evening. Recognition of visitors and guests, we'd like to welcome all of you here, the guests this evening. 1.3 correspondence and recognition, public participation, I've had no requests for public participation. 1.32 recognition of students, staff, and community. We have several to go through. Congratulations to Lyndon Nougabauer as being named as a Region 2AA Speech Coach of the Year. Congratulations to Sophia Soto, a fourth grader at Intermediate School, was named the winner of the Minnesota Rural Water Association Poster Contest that was held statewide. Her poster is featured on the cover of Spring 2023 MRWA Today Magazine, and she received a $100 gift card. Congratulations to Sophia. Congratulations to Tyler Jaycox for earning All-Conference Days Golf, and Lilly Maulberg, and Maya Nixon for All-Conference Girls Golf. Also, congratulations to the boys' track team for qualifying for Truce Team State Track Meet this Saturday at Stillwater. Congratulations to all parties. Okay, moving on to 2.0 approval of agenda. 2.1 consent agenda, I have two additions for the consent agenda. 4.22 is resignation of Tessa Dirks from her current position, and she will be taking this assistant principal to middle school. And 4.32 approve employment of Matt Godian as an art teacher. So add those two to the consent agenda. And also 2.2 is the main agenda. So we need a motion to approve the consent as amended and the main agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda with the additions and also the main agenda.
Okay.
Second?
Motion by Lori, second by Matt to approve the consent agenda with additions and the main agenda as printed. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.0 approval of minutes.
I approve minutes from last month's meeting and the committee meeting minutes.
Motion by Adam.
Second.
Second by Aaron to approve 3.1 and 3.2 as the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.0 items on the consent agenda, we need approval.
I make a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda with the additions that were approved earlier.
Second?
Okay, motion by Steve, second by Matt to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.0 main agenda, monthly financial overview. Dave?
You should have the revenues and expenditures report through the end of April. As you can see, we're running almost right dead on where we were last year with revenues at just over 79%. The expenditures are up a little bit from last year, but we do have a budget amendment, which will bring that back in line later in the agenda. There's really been nothing extraordinary or special on either side of the ledger, so everything's going well.
Okay, any questions for Dave? Okay, we'll move on to 5.2. Approve Education, Identity, and Access Management Board Resolution. 5.2. Not for you, or?
Well, it's an annual resolution that needs to be approved, so it's one of those we get every year, and it has to do with the education, identity, access management piece of our work we do, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the Education, Identity, and Access Management Board Resolution.
Okay, motion by Lori.
Second, Steve.
Second by Steve to approve the Education, Identity, and Access Management Board Resolution. This is a roll call, any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley.
Aye.
Mr. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Schutte.
Aye.
Mr. Bloom.
Aye.
Mr. Schneider.
Aye.
Mr. Woodboom.
Aye.
Motion carries. 5.3 approve 2023-24 vibe calendar.
So the Instruction Committee reviewed this. There is a difference in what I would call the vibe calendar versus the traditional calendar. There is a lot of parent-teacher contact and staff development in August, so that starts in the August 7th and continues on until we start school. And the first day of school would be September 5th for vibe students. And then it moves on to be somewhat of a traditional calendar at that point. And it aligns with 173 instructional days and 186 teacher contract days.
I move approval of the vibe calendar.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Aaron to approve the 2023-24 vibe calendar. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.4 approve budget amendment. This goes to who?
I can just touch, I mean, basically what, at this point in the year, there's revised estimates on both the revenue and expenditure side of the books. One of the revenues is, interest is up, and our interest earnings are up substantially from what we had originally budgeted, thanks to that. The expenditures are a little bit of a lot of things. We have increased, obviously, we had increased snow removal, we have increased sub-costs, and a lot of little things that added up to that increase on the expenditure side.
Okay, any, I guess we need a motion first.
I move for approval of a budget amendment.
Motion by Adam.
Second, Steve.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.5 approve resolution relating to the termination of non-renewal teaching contracts of a teacher contract.
Yeah, and this is for Lisa Madison, which is a probationary. Typically, we would have done this with, in April, with the other ones, but it's due to Dr. Clark being out and Mr. Van Breezen taking over. There was a little bit of a communication glitch, and with that, then, we're moving this forward to do the non-renewal.
I make a motion to approve the resolution for non-renewal.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Matt to approve termination of this contract. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley.
Aye.
Mr. Lorenz.
Aye.
Ms. Schutte.
Aye.
Mr. Bloom.
Aye.
Mr. Schneider.
Aye.
Mr. Woodboom.
Aye.
Motion carries. 5.6 approve a collaborative extracurricular agreement with St. Mary's School and Worthington Christian School.
I move to approve the collaboration of the extracurricular agreement with St. Mary's and the Worthington Christian School.
Second?
Motion by Lori, second by Matt.
I do want to bring up, based on the conversation at the Operational Committee, there was an adjustment made in there, and that the four St. Mary's and Worthington Christian, the allocation of costs, item A was removed based on their recommendation, and that's what you're approving with, that piece of the puzzle is out, or piece of the agreement, so.
Right, and as discussed, this would be only normal student fees would be addressed by the parents or the student, and no operational fees for facilities, correct?
Correct.
And what was the rationale or the basis for removing that clause?
So roughly the last 10 to 12 years, Worthington Christian and St. Mary's students have been allowed to participate in the extracurricular activities at the middle school. What the reason for the agreement is, we have had now that St. Mary's has 7th grade, and potentially we'll look at starting 8th grade, in that we had a student running at a junior varsity, because cross-country was a 7-12 program, we had one running junior varsity, and there should be a collaborative agreement that documents that that's approved. So that's the rationale behind the agreements. The removal was based on the fact that they are District 518 students, in most cases, is why there would not be a charge.
So we get, go ahead, Aaron, sorry.
When you say that they are District 518 students, meaning that they will join public schools once they get to age out of their current school?
Well, it's a parent's choice, so parents could send them to another school, or open enroll them to another school. But currently, the majority of those students that attend Worthington Christian or St. Mary's do come to the high school when they reach that point.
And that's the rationale for why they are not charged a portion of the operation cost of the sport?
Correct.
And in my opinion, they also live in District 518, so they do help with some taxes that come to the district and the operating levy, for sure, for one, and the bond levy, so.
They are residents of 518, so they do pay the taxes here on their property, so.
I do want to also make sure everybody understands when students, and I view, because there was a lot of conversation around this, this is also an opportunity to educate everybody. Students that go, for example, to a private school, we collect transportation dollars for those students, we collect special ed if they qualify for special ed, we collect title dollars, which also flow back through to the private school, and then, of course, if they live in the district, they're helping pay the bond referendums. That's the four areas that the district collects when parents choose to go to a private school. If they choose to open and roll out, the majority of the dollars follow those students other than the bond referendum dollars. So if they go to a neighboring district, those dollars follow the students, including the operating referendum dollars. The other part I want to be clear is, when a parent pays their tax dollars, we may get that back in state aid, but we are limited. If you remember when we did the levy in the fall, we have a cap, and we're told from the Department of Ed, the dollars we can levy, and the rest comes back in general state aid from the state. Just to help educate people where the money comes from.
What athletics do these private schools offer? And I know, Matt, you can probably help, is it basketball, volleyball that the Christian school offers?
Right, and track and soccer.
You know, my only complaint that I've heard about this is, the kids that come from that school get to double up in playing time, which is a huge advantage over the public school kids. And I'm more open to cooperating with the private schools than I am the public schools at this point, but, I mean, in the future, I guess that's something I would explore is, should they get more playing time than these kids that are in the public school? And when they're getting to play in a private school setting already, I mean, that's a huge advantage for them to double dip in minutes.
No, I was just, I was going to ask John, if I remember right, the state aid, if they're not enrolled in our school, then we don't get the state aid per pupil allotment either. So we're getting that funding with the students who are in our school that help pay for these programs, some of the extra costs that are associated with sports that, you know, that the participation fees don't pay for, we don't collect that for students who aren't in our school. So if they're open enrolling out and stuff, it's only fair that we collect some money back to help cover those operational costs and stuff that would potentially get paid for by the state aid allotment that we get if they were students, so.
That's typically why there's a per pupil participant cost to, example, other public schools that we co-op with. There's, based on the activity, it ranges, the costs per activity are different, so. Some sports are, and I'm using sports as an example, there's other activities, but some sports are more expensive than others.
Mr. Chairman, ultimately, the grand scheme of the concept is, this is middle school student athletes, that our 97.9 of them will attend our high school, and so, I mean, I think we have to do everything we can to provide them the opportunity to excel at their student athlete opportunities and be prepared to be part of our varsity programming when they enter the high school. And we continuously saw throughout this past year that we struggled to fulfill the JV softball program because our numbers were low. We've talked about a lower number base in a lot of our athletic programs, so if we have an opportunity for 10 to 12 students to be coming into our system through the private school, to me, we should do everything we can do to encourage them and not to worry about a few dollars. As we heard from our revenue perspective, in the grand scheme of things, a few dollars on millions of dollars is really not worth potentially deterring somebody from being part of the programming.
And I'd also add to that, that if those students have a good relationship with other students within our district and are coming as athletes, we probably have a very good chance that they want to continue their education with us also. So that tie-in when they're younger makes a big difference, I think, in what they do for the future. So I think it's a positive for us in the long run.
Is that the percentage that does come, or is that just a number you were shooting, Matt?
For the number of students?
That come here.
It used to be different 20 years ago when I started, but almost 95% of St. Mary's or higher come to us. Worthington Christian, it used to be lower when I started 20 years ago, now it's about 95% of them come our way, so. It is a good intermingle type program for those kids to become part of our system.
Mr. Chairman, at WCS, they had eight students that participated in three middle school sports per student this past year, and St. Mary's had 10 students participating in at least one of the sports offered. That certainly helps our middle school numbers.
And we haven't gotten to 5.7, but I'd say that the same thing is somewhat true when we get to that one, that students in that school, a lot of them come to Worthington also, and the sooner we get them acclimated into our programs at a younger age, the more likely they are to continue on when they get to high school.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve collaborative extracurricular agreement with Round Lake Brewster School District.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve the collaborative agreement with Round Lake Brewster School District.
Matt?
Second.
By Steve. Any, motion made, a second, any discussion?
I struggle a little more with this again, like I did with Adrian, and, you know, there's a huge percentage of our kids that go to Round Lake Brewster at the younger ages, and I don't think we get the percentage of the private schools to come into our high school setting. And, you know, my job here is to worry about the kids of District 518 and support them, and I just, I have a hard time taking playing time and practice time away from those kids. We might be low on numbers, but, you know, when COVID hit, Adrian, Round Lake Brewster, Folda, they sure didn't care to take the kids away from us then, and, yeah, we've gotten a chunk back, but I just have a little hard feelings about some of that, and they're also looking at making a big expansion onto their school and adding another one or two grades, aren't they? If I'm not mistaken?
Same grades.
Round Lake Brewster's a K8.
They're not adding any grades, no.
Okay. I know there was a lot of Facebook keyboard experts calling me ignorant last month, but, I don't know. I'm supporting our kids, and this one I'm not going to approve.
How many numbers do we have coming from there, do you know?
Well, 70, last year, just about 70% of the students that attended Round Lake Brewster were our resident students. Of that, we get probably 90% of them back to our district when they come, or close, 85 to 90%. So they do come back. The difference here, and I will tell you, in this agreement, we do charge them a per pupil charge. The other difference is, the reason you would want to charge them is the dollars follow those students from state aid, as well as our operating referendum. So I will debate with you that it's appropriate to charge them a per participant cost.
Right, so to be clear, this agreement is different than the one with St. Mary's and Worthington Christian School, so they will be paying a normal fee and operational costs per sport, whatever that.
Wherever they participate.
Yeah, okay.
How many students do we get in sports, you know?
I, we have never had a participation agreement with them before, or collaborative agreement, so we don't know what that will be.
Mr. Chairman, as far as the timing on this, is it similar to the Adrian agreement for years, or is it a one-year-at-a-time kind of agreement?
Typically, collaborative agreements at the varsity or that level are two years can be renewed. This can be annual.
Okay, just because of the middle school level?
Yeah.
It says in the last page on the Mississippi State, it's a three-year, starting on July 1st and going through 2026, so.
And again, their board will discuss this at their upcoming meeting, so.
So we have a motion, and a second. Any further discussion? So the difference is, this being, we are charging the cost of the program to the student. Different?
Well, okay, I want to be clear, we don't charge the students, we charge the school.
The school district, right.
But we still don't get the, we don't get the state aid of those kids until they come into our school, which we're losing dollars on again, correct?
We are, yeah. Those dollars follow those kiddos.
And up to this point, we've had students from St. Mary's and Worthington Christian School participating, and this new agreement that we just passed is formalizing that, whereas this proposed agreement with Round Lake Brewster would be inviting students for the first time to participate in activities in our district?
Correct.
Okay. Are there other schools that are interested in this type of thing that we could foresee as extending invitations in the future?
At this time, no. They, either, at this time, I'm not aware of any others.
Okay, any further discussion? Everyone understands that it's different than the other agreement? Districts are being charged our cost for the program. To the other district. But they're still able to take part. Any further discussion? This is a regular vote?
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. 5.8 approve West Building demolition.
Dave, you want to cover? And just so you're aware, Nick Willen from ICS is here, so if you have specific questions about the demo, he's here to help answer any of that.
Yeah, we opened bids last week for the demolition of West Elementary. We did receive six bids, which was good. The low bid was from DRC Incorporated for $398,000, and then there was also an alternate bid which would revise the schedule from a summer to a fall demolition, and if we were to accept that alternate, there's a savings of $100,000. The bids ranged all the way up to $680,000. So there was quite a range in the bid prices, but ICS has worked with this company before, and they recommend that we go with them for the bid. The question would be whether or not you want to consider the alternate.
A couple of questions. Number one is, the alternate isn't, you either do it one or the other, it's you have the option, or if we choose the option to have them do it in the fall, then they have to do it in the fall? If they elect to say, hey, wait a minute, I'm going to do it in the summertime now, do we have to pay them the additional amount? Or can we just say, hey, it's, we're going to take the alternate and you do it in the fall?
I think if we accept the alternate, they're under contract for that amount, and they have the option to start like after September 1st.
But if they change their mind and want to come in the summertime, they could still do it, but they still get paid the alternate price because that's what we approved?
Yes.
Okay. Also, this is more on the specifications, what's happening with the pilings that are in the ground? Are they taking those down to some specific depth, digging down and cutting those off?
Yes, they're going below footings and cutting them off below footing, so roughly six to seven feet.
Okay.
I got that right, didn't I, Nick?
There'll be an as-built drawing that'll follow when the project is done, just kind of showing where they're at for any future. Say you guys would sell the ground and somebody wants to build on it, you'd have a drawing that shows height of those, so they'd know where it's at.
So this bid is not including the alternate, so it's 100 less than this?
So, as it was explained, the bid came in at $398,000. You can accept that, and they would start in June. If you accept the alternate, which is $100,000 deductible, which would lower the price to $298,000, then they would start after September 1, and do it over the winter or late fall into the winter.
Do you have a sense of the latest point in time in which they would demolish if we accept option B?
The demo would be done over the winter, probably finish up in January would be my assumption, but you wouldn't get seeded, because part of the bid is to seed that whole area with grass. That can't be done by Minnesota standards until, I believe it's like April or early May. So you'd have an empty lot, no building. or early May. So you'd have a, an empty lot, no building. It would have all graded black dirt. You just wouldn't have the grass growing on it yet.
Mr. Chairman, a question for the expert. Is there any reason we wouldn't take the $100,000 deductible and?
Depends on how bad you want the building down. If it's something that's bothering you having an empty building. One thing this contractor did call me and tell me was that he has done a number, I mean, all he does is demo schools. So the first thing he would do, if it was accepted, is he's going to come put cameras in there so people don't get in there and start graffitiing or doing stuff in there they shouldn't be. That would be the couple of concerns would be, if you're worried about people getting into it, you'd probably want to get it down sooner. If you're just tired of looking at it, you'd want to get it down sooner. Other than that, I guess, I don't know any reason why I, yeah, why I would dissuade you from the $100,000 savings.
Thank you.
Laurie?
I'm just saying, I don't think there's a hurry, in my opinion, to have to have this done this summer. I mean, it's eyesore, yes, and all that, but we waited 20 years temporary programming in that building. So another three or four months, in my opinion. I would support the, do it in the fall and save 100,000.
Dave?
I had some people approach me asking if it's going to be open or possible for public like they did with Central Elementary, and so to come in and take a few mementos or do something, salvage some stuff out of the school. I don't know if that was something that we would allow or not allow for people. I know there's, I've seen examples in the community where where people have had parts of the building, and they've, and they've got them on, you know, display or used it in in construction, and it looks very nice, you know, chunks, pieces of of rock or or stone on walls, stuff like this. I was just wondering if we're going to, we would allow any of that type of thing for people to come in and grab a memento or something from the building or do something like that?
Personally, I don't know what memento they would really want out of that building.
You'd be surprised what people remember. I remember when I, when I, before I built my house, somebody pulled up and said, can I have that stone? That was a stone by the front door of the house, and we were going to bury it. And they wanted it because that's when they grew up. They remembered that stone. So people have memories of strangest things. And and so I just, the question was asked, I just thought I'd bring it up and see if there was any, if any plan to allow that.
I guess I would recommend that if there's somebody that interested in something, if it's even still there, they would need to contact the district office, and then we'll talk to them about it.
Okay, sounds fair. I don't know if I want the whole public going and ransack in the building necessarily, but somebody had something that they felt strongly about.
Yeah, we'll do an appointment only thing.
Is there going to be like a treasure hunt for that time capsule we keep reading about or hearing about? Going to go out and dig up the, dig up the front lawn or something to try and find that? Or, okay.
I make a motion that we accept the bid from DRC and take the $100,000 deduction and let them start next fall.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Adam, second by Laurie to take the bid of, would be 298, starting after September 1, right? Think it'll be mostly winter time, though.
Yeah. That's, that's kind of the way he made it sound, is that he'd do a lot of this demo work. Obviously, the hard part will be spreading out black dirt if it gets too cold. But I think the majority of it will be late fall or late winter.
Is there a completion date then, or completion times? They have to have it done? We talk about going into winter, but are we talking about like finishing it, I mean, remove, finishing the removal and in February or March or something? Or they have to have this done by a specific date?
There's no end date other than next spring.
Okay. And one other question, then, the unit prices, soil corrections, what type of soil corrections do we anticipate?
That one I can't answer.
So I think the concern would be with the unknown of what's under this building, what these pilings look like. Some of them probably have sank, some of them, I mean, so they don't want to come in here and have an extra five semi-loads worth of dirt that they got to bring in when they get underneath this slab, since those pilings probably, some of them rotted because the walls, I know there were some walls that had kind of, some floors that were unlevel. So essentially, that 40 yard, or $40 a cubic yard would be, if they run into something unforeseen, that we would have to label as unforeseen and not bitter error.
So so it's not soil correction, like taking out contaminated soils
Correct.
replacing it, it's it's actually putting, bringing extra fill to level the site up?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify probably saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five point nine, 2324 resolution for membership in this Minnesota State High School League.
So this was not presented at the instructional committee. We added it. It's the annual resolution for our high school to participate in the Minnesota High School League. They are doing it a little different. So with this, it's electronic signatures. So ultimately, I'll go in and sign if you approve this, and then Mr. Schneider will have to go in and sign electronically. They'll send him an email. So, but it's the annual resolution we do every year.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll move to approve the 2023-2024 resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Aaron, second by Laurie to approve the 2324 membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Any discussion?
Has those membership fees leveled out a little bit? I mean, a few years ago through COVID, every year they were higher and higher, so.
They changed their structure. They're about the same as they were last year. Yeah, it's higher, no doubt, a lot higher than it was previously.
Have they, they had a, they're going through a review. Weren't they looking at at how they set the different rates or adjusted? Did they do any adjustments on on their rates that they're charging?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So all that, all that complaining and all that excitement we had really didn't result in any changes, really? Okay.
No.
Okay. Did we vote on that or any?
Nope.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Dudley?
Aye.
Mr. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Schute?
Aye.
Mr. Bloom?
Aye.
Mr. Schneider?
Aye.
Mr. Woodboom?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that's it for the General. Going to reports, John Superintendent's report.
So just have a couple quick items to update you on. I'll try, when I get to the legislative, not to go too crazy, but anyway, the district action plan, I did update it. Their administrators are looking it over. There may be a few updates again related to this, but again, remember, this is a working document that guides where we're headed on some of the projects or things that we are doing. So just FYI for you, visit with the administrators today. We have approximately 20-plus open certified positions that are, we're waiting to try and fill at this point, some in a higher need area than probably others where we might be able to get by. But we continue to get a hire done every week the way it seems. So we're, we're making headway, but it's slow. So just FYI for you. Legislatively, I'll do this pretty quick, but right now, the education bill will pass. It'll be four and two, and it'll be indexed to inflation between the range of 2% to 3%. So no lower than 2%, no higher than 3. Special education cross subsidy for next year will be 40%. The following year, 50%. They did shore up the school readiness VPK slots, and they created 5,200 more slots. So there's money tied to the preschool numbers. Don't know what they are yet, but that'll help support that. They did pass legislation for the cooperative facilities lease levy. So all of us will see on our levy sheets a $65 per pupil levy that will come through on the lease levy side. There is other student support, personnel aid, Reed, the Reed Act or Literacy Act is part of this. One that we were in favor of, Board Authority to renew expiring operating levies. So example, our operating levy expires next year. You have the opportunity, not next year, the year after, but you have the opportunity to approve that $500 per pupil levy. You will have to do that before, not this June 15, but next June 15.
Did they state how long it could stay in place?
Same number of years.
That you have.
Same dollar amount, same number of years.
Okay.
There is some transportation sparsity aid, and school social workers will now qualify for MA building, billing. There's EL learner aid, school library support aid, American Indian aid, full-service community aid, multi-tier systems of support aid, and paraprofessional training aid, and cybersecurity grants. There are a number of grants that are part of the legislation, so just such as the grow your own programs, those type of things. Things that are going to be challenged, and probably huge challenges for education, unemployment insurance, which goes into effect May 28. And that's going to be a big one. Restrictions on suspension and seclusion rooms, excuse me. There also is some curriculum, no, I'm all right, Aaron.
This is on open.
There is some course pieces, government and citizenship, personal finance requirements in there, the jobs portion, labor portion. There is new language for terms and conditions to be a part of bargaining. Does Matt mean you have to agree to it? That just has to be part of it. Earn safe and sick time, and it's set at 20 weeks. And then transportation policy for our type three vehicles, there is flexibility, anything 2007 or newer, as long as it's approved by the DOT for our service, we can continue using it. So what's all the finances mean to us? I'm not going to go through each one, but in 2024, the estimated dollar amount that we will see as new revenue is $3,341,999. In 2025, the new revenue would be $4,004,28,458. Now, remember, those are estimates. Not everything's totally defined. So just want to kind of give you the heads up where legislation is falling, and it's going to create some difficulties for all of you in decisions. So I'll probably leave it at that. Otherwise, I'll get on my soapbox, and we'll be here a lot longer.
Okay, is that it?
That's it. I'm going to quit.
Okay. Instructional Committee report.
Mr. Chair, everything's been covered, except we did talk a little bit about the mental health services that we're getting in the district from the SRF funding. And of course, that SRF funding is going to run out next year. So we did talk a little bit about that we'll have to decide as a, as a board next year what that would look like to make sure we can maintain some of that mental health counseling once that money runs out. Otherwise, everything else was covered.
Okay, thank you, Laurie. Operations Committee. I guess that was you and I this time.
Everything there was covered as well. We, we did talk a little bit about the watershed update, just briefly, that they're staking that out, and you can see a little bit of movement out there, what that's going to look like, but no definite.
Sounds like that'll be some dirt activity next summer, possibly, on the watershed.
On the watershed?
That's a year away before they get everything.
Otherwise, it's been covered.
A question to that committee, Mr. Chairman, on the WABA presentation and discussion. Was there any points of interest there?
Which was that?
WABA brought what their long-term plan is with, example, putting a canopy over the, the bleachers, entrance to the area, trees, park-type thing, playground. So yeah, actually, I'll write myself a note, and I'll send you the booklet.
Thank you.
So they would rather that we put money into the existing field than build new fields? Is that right?
They never really said that, but they are looking for support, I'm assuming.
Yeah, they really just went through the booklet of what they've done so far and what their goals are, how much money that they've raised so far, how much more money they want to raise, and kind of the long term for the project. We left it that we're going to discuss it at a work session at some point when we set that up to talk about fields and what that looks like. So there was nothing more than their presentation, really.
Okay. Any other reports? Other business?
When are we going to look at our work session? Are we just going to send some dates out sometime and?
We'll send some dates out for June.
Okay. We'll look for a work session in June after we get the budget issues from the state clarified. Sometime in June, we'll do that. Any future business? Know of anything else, do you?
When is graduations again?
Yeah, graduation. Thank you. That's a good one to bring up. Learning Center graduation is Thursday, May 25. I believe that's at 6 o'clock. And the high school graduation is May 26 at 6 o'clock. And we do ask all board members to attend.
They're both at 6 o'clock.
Correct.
They should be there by what, 5?
I think I saw the email. They would like you there about at least 20 minutes early so that they can pin the flower on you, or somebody can pin the flower on.
If not, we'll call the meeting adjourned.